All right, we have all the meeting with Hampton County Council order. Uh, we're going to have pledge, Mrs. Farah, but if I may, let me take a moment, just for a moment of silence for victims of Pittsburgh. That is a terrible, terrible thing. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, um, number, if you recall, roll.
Mr. Cusick?
Present.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Farah?
Here.
Mr. Heckman?
Here.
Mr. Lot?
Here.
Mr. McGee?
Here.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. Rensky?
Here.
All present.
All right, I'd like to run a motion, have a motion to approve the minutes of October eighteenth.
Motion.
Second.
Second, um, fiveteenth and the twenty-fourth, excuse me, eighteenth and the twenty-fourth. So, if your motion is still okay with that, we'll go ahead.
Motion's still okay with that.
Second's still okay with that.
All right, um, so, all favor?
Aye.
I oppose, um...
Oh, God, I need...
Courtesy of the floor, uh, who I have written there, we had some folks who were here from the Stiefel, uh, so what I have here is Glenn Lipton-Waller.
I think he's...
Do you want to come up?
Actually, I signed in for this meeting.
Is there anything you'd like to say?
No.
Okay.
Is he from the Stiefel?
I don't know where...
Oh, good.
She, she wanted to know what, if you were with this group?
No.
Oh, okay.
I am, uh, gonna be talking about the forensic center later.
Oh, great.
Oh, okay.
That's a lot of Stiefel, okay, we're good.
It is not.
Oh, all right, so you, well, you've signed it, yeah, we'll, we'll get to that.
It may be before the end of the...
No, that's okay, thank you.
And now you're gone.
Is it Kevin, uh, Dels, is it? Dulce, Kevin Dulce? Kevin?
Seen, not seen Kevin, is there anyone else who would like to speak at courtesy of the floor? Seen no one? I'll ask for the county executive to give his report. If he has one.
I do just, uh, very quickly, uh, I understand that inspections of this type are routine, and we did talk about our prison inspection previously, but in, in my short tenure, receiving letters of the type that we received from the Department of Corrections is not a routine matter, and I just wanted to read to you, uh, this letter that we received. Dear Director Castora, on September eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the required Title Thirty-Seven, Chapter Ninety-five inspection of the Northampton County Jail and West Easton facilities were conducted. These inspections consist of a review of written local policies slash procedures, support documentation, and an inspection of the physical plant of the facilities for compliance with each of the required regulations. In accordance with Title Thirty-Seven, Section Ninety-five, point twenty-two, point B three, the department's inspectors will issue the preliminary findings and inspections of the county prison administration, and what they ultimately concluded was that, um, we were, both of our facilities were completely in compliance, and that the inspe, they, they found the inspection, uh, to be so satisfactory that we do not have to be inspected next year. We don't have to be inspected again until two thousand and twenty. So I thought that, um, we were, uh, I thought that's something council would want to know. Also, I know Mr. Cusick asked for the report, uh, the security aspects of the report are being redacted, and we're getting it over to council as soon as that's done. Uh, Tim Brennan's our right to know officer, and he's busy, so, uh, as soon, of course, you can inspect a unredacted copy whenever you want, we just ask that council not share the security portions of that with the public. Uh, Mr. Cusick asked about our election preparedness, uh, we are, uh, prepared, we are ready to go, there are contingencies, um, laid out to make sure all the judges can return their, uh, could get, get their supplies at the beginning of the day, return them at the end of the day, and that we expect a busy but smooth election day. Are there any questions about that?
We've moved, are there...
We have.
Yeah.
Yes, there aren't any, there aren't any humans living, uh, working there now.
Somebody wants to go for question publicly, where do they go, the human service?
No, they're, they're here, Mrs. Farah, the elections office.
Okay, I, I missed that.
They're here in the first floor where, remember where we were temporarily when this was being done?
Right.
That space is now the elections office.
Mm-hmm.
And we've had some confusion, but not a great deal.
Okay.
With the signage has been pretty good.
If I may, uh, and this was asked of me, so I'm gonna ask it of you, 'cause I thought it was interesting, okay? Someone mentioned about this Alt Point Capital Partners, who's a, a, a very large investor in a Russian oligarchy, and they have to do with voting machines, okay?
That's awesome.
Bear with me on this, okay?
Oh, is this the...
Um, the problem was, the, they said the problem was that most counties don't have a way to evaluate the vendor security practice, I believe we do, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, the answer to that is yes, we do.
I believe so, yes.
Thank you. Um, Lehigh County, the chief of elections have flash drives that they use once, and then they turn them in and they send them directly to Harrisburg. Are, we send our stuff to Harrisburg also, correct?
What, our, our drives?
Our drives.
No, we do not.
We don't send them to Harrisburg, okay? That was the second question, okay? And, um, when asked about the election division, uh, apparently our Northampton County head of elections did not respond to comment or information to the public, so I don't know why...
A press inquiry?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, do you know what the press inquiry was?
No, I, I'm bringing this to you now because it was, it was brought up to me, and I thought, well, you can answer it here.
What I was, I was told about a press inquiry, uh, regarding how many people we expect to vote based on the absentee ballots, and we're just not in the prognostication business. We think it's gonna be as busy as any gubernatorial year is, maybe with a slight uptick, based on the absentees, but we're not in the prognostication business, we're, we're gonna collect, we're gonna have people vote and count them.
Fair enough, thanks.
And I think that's probably what, uh, Ms. Ramsey would've told Mr. Shoretale if I'm ever in court.
I'm sure, they, you know...
If, if you'll, if you'll indulge me in a minute, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm gonna ask, is Mr. Lysic here, is that a coroner here? I'm gonna ask him to come up and, um, reintroduce, um, a, a plan that has been updated for our forensic center, uh, and, uh, it should only take a few minutes, but we thought that since the forensic center is a piece of what we're doing tonight with respect to the bond ordinance, it would be a good idea to have an opportunity to, to see what the, what the plan actually is for the forensic center. It's, um, when we're talking about the bond ordinance, though, uh, we're talking about a, a much bigger picture than just the forensic center and where it's gonna go, and I'll have a few things to say about that as well. This, this week, we, Mr., uh, Mr. Warner did us a service by reminding us that county council's the governing body of Northampton County, and indeed it is, and this county council has an opportunity tonight, um, with the consideration and, and what I would urge to you to be the passage of this bond ordinance, to be the county council that tackled long-term hard problems without the necessity in the foreseeable future of returning to the taxpayers for any more real estate tax money. If you pass this bond ordinance tonight, you will buy the Human Services Building, and in the very near future, you're going to be hearing about some dynamic twenty-first-century programs that we're going to be running out of the Human Services Building to protect children in a better way.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this is something that's gonna happen, and that, and that's the big piece of this, purchasing the Human Services Building and being able to leverage the state money in order to, uh, help us pay for that is the largest piece of what we're doing in this bond. It, it, it is, it is so, it is so terribly important, and it's so important in the context that this council, this governing body, will be the governing body who took a concept, the P-three concept, which was troubled, and made it work. And actually, by doing this, you will make sure over the next four years, we will have the requisite cash to pay for the bridges, uh, that will be, that will be turned over to us, and you're going to make that work. That'll be this governing body who does that tonight by passing this bond ordinance, and to me, that's really exciting as a, as a former member of, of the county council. And, and finally, that we have the forensic center, and, and I know there's been a great deal of concern about where the forensic center's going.
Mm-hmm.
And tonight, I will not be able to give you a definitive location, unfortunately, but one of the things I will be able to tell you is, this forensic center is a twenty-first-century building. It'll be as smart as we can afford to make, and it'll be powered by the sun. That's, uh, one of the really, um, exciting things about the forensic center. With respect to its location, we have, as I've told you before, uh, three really terrific possibilities, and internally, as we've been doing our due diligence, and one of the reasons I can't stand here tonight and definitively tell you where we think we should put it is because it's not good government, because we're still chasing down some incredibly interesting opportunities, uh, for where to site it, and for a potential, uh, partner with a, partnership with an academic institution of higher learning, um, that, uh, is a complicated process and, and one what, uh, which I cannot, uh, announce tonight because we're not there. We, we cannot say that we can do this, I, I wish I could. Um, I will tell you, uh, we think that A, B, and C are all home runs, they're all A properties, they'd all get an A grade, um, two of the properties we own. Um, one of the sites that we're considering is, uh, adjacent to the hangar where Saint Luke's used to fly a helicopter. Uh, another site we're considering is the northeast corner of Louise Moore Park, um, and again, I, I, I referenced the academic, uh, uh, institution of higher learning, uh, that, uh, there's exciting potential to partnership with, but what I would say about all these locations, they all have reasons that commend them. They, they're all good reasons to do each of these notions, if you will, and they all have significant problems, and it, in the end, it will be, um, where we can, uh, cite the facility that's going to cost our folks the least amount of money. Budget's ten point six million, I'm not going over budget, so whatever, uh, whatever we need to do to come in at ten point six million, that's where we're going to go, and, uh, that's what I'm working on for you right now, and I promise, as soon as we can have that nailed down, I'll, I'll have that, uh, that information for you. But with that, um, I'd like to, uh, ask the coroner to come forward and, uh, make his introduction.
Um, if I may, I just wanna ask, does council, you, you want him to do it now, or are you gonna wait till we, we read the ordinance and have our discussion? I mean, I just wanted to ask if anybody had any objection?
No.
No, go right ahead.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, George. Thank you very much. County Executive, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, first of all, this is exciting, we're, we're finally doing this, so I'm, I'm excited about this, and, and I hope this progresses nicely. Um, you know, I, uh, County Executive McClure said it very well, you know, exactly, um, and, uh, with, without further to do, also, I don't wanna just stand up here and waste, you know, talk too much, but I would like to introduce you to Glenn Lipton-Waller, he is the, uh, architect that helped the county with the conceptual drawings, and there have been a number of different versions, so, uh, some, some of you who, who have been on council have seen kind of some of these drawings, they, they have changed since, uh, the, the drawings that you originally saw, so, uh, I'd like to introduce Glenn, uh, to also help with that process.
Well, I'll just wait a minute. Sure. Thank you, and, uh, Glenn Lipton-Waller from the W-two-A Design Group, we're located in Allentown. Um, in fact, the space that, uh, you were in now was one of our designs that we did, I don't know, fifteen years ago, I guess, could be. Uh, we started with, uh, working with Zach, uh, two thousand and twelve, and two thousand and thirteen, we then, in June, presented the first version of this forensic center. What you see on the screen now is an updated version that, uh, dated, uh, July, I'm sorry, it...
No, 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 it's not you, it's our screen.
You know, you know what I have, I have floor plans, a hard copy, would that be, help you?
For each of us?
Well, I have two sets.
If you wanna give one to the...
No, but she can, they can put their, they can put their...
Do you wanna...
One on that side, one on that side.
Campfire, right around the campfire.
Yeah, we're good.
There should be, uh, there's two sets of these, you've got them around...
Thank you, it, it's just, with our screens, sadly, with, with some of us, our eyes aren't with these... Well, I, I know the feeling. That's why I got my reading glasses right here, too.
If we put it here, maybe we could all...
Oh, there are three sets, good, good.
No, you don't care, you don't care.
I wasn't sure. So, um, just to go briefly through this, and then I'll be open for questions, but basically, the plan that you have, uh, of, of July of this year, you have the building broken into, or, uh, developed into, you know, four different areas. Uh, the darker blue is the public areas, that's where your main entrance is, it's very secure, you can't go anywhere else except for that, if you're in the public, in that area. There is a reception area off that, uh, that blue, darker blue area, there's kind of a lighter and a darker blue, I hope you can see that.
Yeah.
Uh, the lighter blue is the, uh, office areas, this where, uh, we have twenty-four workstations in there, as well as seven offices, places for, uh, secretarial or clerical, uh, staff, workroom, as well as file rooms. Uh, in that area, uh, we will be adding, since, um, it was, uh, this is a change from the two thousand and twelve version, we now have a digital forensic, uh, portion that is going to be placed into this building now, okay? And so that's one, one of the major changes to the plan.
Could, could I just talk, could you tell us what that is and why we need it?
I, I would like to have maybe Zach.
Where are we?
The digital, yeah, I, I know what it is, but for the public...
Digital forensic.
Okay, thanks. You're welcome.
Yep. Okay, so what digital forensics are now, right now, um, in today's society, so many things are, it's so very important, I'm sorry, um, when, when we're, when we're investigating deaths and, and other cases, uh, we work very closely with law enforcement on that, and more and more, uh, when we have events that occur, some of the recent cases that you've seen in the media, uh, the recent arrest with the, um, what they call perk thirties, those pills, we were able to develop that case and, uh, put that together using digital forensics. In other words, cell phone analysis, computer analysis, so th, those aspects become very important, uh, when you're doing these type of investigations, and, and as you know, this is something that we've done in our office or, or cooperation with other agencies for years, and we've taken a very aggressive approach to that, but it's, it's, the technology is where we need to be in this day and age, um, I'm sorry, we, we, uh, we should be doing it, and we have to be doing it, and, and we are doing it, and we now need the facility, a secure area, uh, to do it properly, and that's what that's about. Does that answer?
The, uh, yellow, yellow area on the plan, that is, uh, what we call the body lab, um, that's where the, actually, you will see some, uh, entrance locations with arrows and the kind of flow, uh, where the body would come into the Sallyport area, the doors would close, the body would then be taken to the autopsy spaces, uh, in either, to the one side, which is, uh, to, uh, you're right, there is a actual decomposed autopsy space. Uh, these are bodies that, uh, need to have special space that would be totally separated from the other autopsy space, and the reason for that is, well, it's kind of pretty obvious, I would say, to you, and Zach can talk further about that if you have questions about that. Uh, but the other, to then, the left side of the plan, that is then the main body lab area, that's where the autopsy spaces would be, the evidence storage, uh, the body storage, uh, with coolers, as well as we also have a freezer area.
Question, if I may?
Sure.
I, I believe I know what this is, that you have the yellow viewing with the curtain, would that be for families?
Okay.
To come in?
Very good question, thank you for bringing that up. This is, uh, a, a building that we're really concerned about the public and how they are able to view a body, having a, a moment of time to go and view the body, if necessary, when it's necessary, and have a very secured area to do so. So, there would be a, a room for the public to go in, and, uh, there is a window there, they can then view the body from that point.
Is that in the yellow space?
That is in the yellow space. If you see that little notch that goes into the, the, the public area, that is where, uh, they'll be able to view the body, okay?
Oh, just that small little yellow rectangle?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so they don't have to go all the way down the hall?
Basically, a gurney, the body would be on a gurney.
So it's just this area, right there?
Yeah.
And the public... The public doesn't have access to that other than the blue area, though, and that's the viewing area into the...
That's what's becomes very important, so, so when you have these type of situations, uh, depending what the circumstances are surrounding the death, you have to restrict access to the body at times, so the way that's set up, and, and we put a lot of time in the design of this, it's set up in such a fashion that you could almost, uh, fluctuate what access you're going to give. If it's just gonna be a visual inspection through a window, we could accommodate that.
Yeah, I see that, that's through the private waiting room, that looks like there's a window sketched in.
Yes, that's correct.
Or you can go in with the door from the blue area.
That's correct.
As well as a, a curtain, um, that you can close off the rest of it.
Yeah, that would be, you know, some type of, of, of method, so, nobody would be, uh, allowed access to the yellow area for security reasons and, and, um, because of what's in those areas, uh, unless they're escorted, and, and, you know, that would be very strictly enforced, but that would be the one area that we could almost fluctuate that, that security level, and if we're able to allow family to have access, you know, when you, when you think about, somebody loses somebody they love, sometimes they need to have a few moments, um, and sometimes more than that with that person, and it would allow us to accommodate families in such a manner.
And then there's a second viewing area, what would that be for? The larger...
That, that viewing, that viewing area is, is beside the autopsy space, so that would be a space where, uh, the, the law enforcement could, could come if they want to view the autopsy, or if they're, wanna view certain aspects of the procedure of the autopsy, or have discussions with the...
Medical students, possibly?
The students, yeah, medical students also, and that's the other part of it.
Thank you.
Is where, uh, the pathology, students would be able to go there.
Generally, not the public, you're not viewing.
No, not at all.
Never.
Not at all. It's only, uh, law enforcement and probably students in that fact. But, well, sometime, go ahead, go ahead.
It's fascinating.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna just do a tag team.
Yeah, I, I, I apologize, I don't mean to be, uh, keep interrupting.
You've been waiting for years for this. You've been waiting for years for this, so go ahead.
I, I know, I'm, I'm excited, so I apologize. Um, so the narcotics area, why that's important, it's important because, number, there's, there's a couple different things, we collect medications, one of the things that we took an aggressive approach to, uh, starting a number of years ago, and forgive me, I think it's at least six years now, while, when we go out to the scene of a death and we investigate, we collect any medications that are prescribed to the decedent, the reason being is because federal law prohibits that medication from being distributed to other people. Uh, the other thing is, is it gets into the wrong hands a lot of times. Um, a common practice is people don't know what to do, so they flush it down the toilet, wrong thing to do, because what happens, it then goes into the water supply, it ends up in the rivers, and it goes downstream.
Yeah.
So, we try to prevent that, we, what we do is we collect those medications, and we have, uh, the sheriff's department has put together a program, and, um, with all the jurisdiction police departments, where they have the drug give-back programs, and that is then collected, and it's destroyed in a proper fashion, it's incinerated. Um, the other area for narcotics is, so when we collect medications, I, I, I don't mean to keep referring to this case, but when you look back at the case, when we go out and we investigate a death, and we think back to what we just recently saw in the news, where something may look like it's regular medication, and the reality is, it's not. So, in, in, in that case, when you have a, like, the blue pills that you saw in some photographs, they, they look like Percocet, but the reality is, they're not, that was Carfentanil. Carfentanil is an extremely, uh, potent form of fentanyl, so that has to be handled properly. We have, uh, a lot of controls in place to do that, but we need a place like this to secure that, and to ensure that it's, it's safely secured and that we're handling it properly, for everyone's sake. I'm sorry.
And I, I'm, just tell me, just tell me to hold off on my question if, if it doesn't fit yet, okay? But, are you leasing equipment, or are you buying equipment for inside this building?
It would, the majority would be purchased, um, I, I, I would, would not be aware of any items that we would lease, off the top of my head, and forgive me, I'm just trying to think where...
I'm just, I, yeah, just a question about the equipment, because I know some of it's very expensive, and I, you know, the...
Yeah, so, I, I, in, if I may, in, in some of the air, uh, the yellow area with the workflow, we talk about, uh, like a CAT scan, uh, or what we call low ducts, so what a low duct system is, it's a full-body scanner, when you put a body in, it's, it's kind of looks like when you go to an airport, or you go down to the security in the rotunda, you go on a conveyor belt and it x-rays the body from top to bottom. One of the reasons why is we need to see what's on the body, what's in the body, uh, it becomes very important, uh, in documenting everything, so, it, it's kind of twofold. Um, with reference to, for example, if we would go with the CAT scan, uh, you know, we certainly would not go with a new one, um, and I'm not certain if you would go with a lease, or you would just get, uh, so, so, as technology advances, for example, if you go get a CAT scan in a hospital, it's usually sixty-four slice, part of the reason why it's that, because you gotta lay still, our people lay still, they listen, um...
Yeah.
And, um, so we don't need the sixty-four.
You couldn't get through without a joke, could you?
I, no, I'm being serious, they, they do listen to your questions.
You don't have signs that say, "Don't move."
Don't move, yeah.
Zach, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One more, one more question, um...
Oh, yeah, that's exponentially less expensive, like...
Absolutely.
You may even go on donating.
Okay, well, that was the other thing I was gonna ask you, did, do you have the potential for asking for donations from other entities, yes?
Certainly, we would look into that.
Okay, and, and as far as the maintenance of the building, it's, stop me if I'm, if this doesn't fit, maintenance of building will be on, included in that number? Does the county take care of it, or do we have to get a service contract with you to take care of that?
No, well...
Forgive me if I'm asking a lot of questions, 'cause I, I didn't get all the answers from the newspaper the other night, I was waiting, I read everything you said, but I didn't get all the answers, so...
I appreciate that, um, so, we, we, there, there may be some service contracts, but it's, it's kind of limited, for example, a low duct system, you know, it, there has, there's a warranty period, uh, but they're pretty low maintenance, I, I don't know that you necessarily need a maintenance contract or something like that, but the actual, the building itself, the structure...
You'll need security.
Um, I don't think we would need security other than our staff, we would need outside security or sheriff's department personnel.
No one's getting away.
We, I'm sorry.
No one's getting away, I get you.
See, you did it, you're right.
No, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't.
Well, you know, at, at our office now, we have no security, um, you know, we maintain the security, uh, by, through our staff, and, and that's what I would anticipate we would do here, I would not anticipate needing, um, other security.
Okay, thank you.
It's designed in such a fashion to address that.
Mr. Lot had a question.
I'm so sorry.
Yeah, um, this is just more of my own knowledge, um, so you have your two waiting rooms, and your viewing room, and that seven-by-twelve room, you, you'd never have somebody actually go in there with the body, or would they be...
It, it could be, and, and that's kind of the different degree of security, so we, if, if we could allow that, depending on the circumstances surrounding the death, we, we certainly try to allow families to do that.
And the only reason I ask that is because I see you have a curtain there, and if the public, I, I realize you'd escort them in there, but a curtain allows, you know, that would be access to our secured area, I just...
Somebody would not be allowed with the body, unattended.
Unattended, but...
No.
The body wouldn't typically be there, and some part of the hallway, you know, you know what I'm getting at, it's, it's only the time when the body would arrive, we then allow that curtain to be open, now, we can do other ways of masking off the glass in different ways, you know, that's something... And there, there, that's something also, you know, a, again, it's, um, it, it's difficult to depict all this in the drawing, you know, there could be a magnetic strike door there behind the curtain that secures that very well, a minimal...
Something like that, to make sure that...
Absolutely, yes.
Public to non-public areas are separated, but that's your job.
May, may I say, I get the sense you've taken all of this into consideration, there's
And there, there, that's something also, you know, again, it's, it's difficult to depict all this in the drawing. You know, there could be a magnetic strike door there behind the curtain that secures that very well, a minimal...
Something like that, to make sure that...
Absolutely, yes.
Public to non-public areas are separated, but that's your job.
May, may I say, I get the sense you've taken all of this into consideration. There's probably certain design standards when you're building a forensic center or a ward in the modern, most modern, what you're looking into.
And, and our firm was involved with the state-of-the-art forensic center down in Bucks County.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dietz has a question.
Yeah, so the, the ten point six million dollars, is that just for the building, or does that include the equipment inside? All, all the equipment we need?
Yes, it does.
It includes the equipment inside?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Question. The freezer portion of the building and, you know, the opioid, and I'm sure you figured out like what, twenty, I think there's twenty-four spaces there or twenty-two spaces, and that's gonna be enough for the growing population of the county and, and the aging population of the county.
Actually, we showed, you know, different twenty-four spaces, but you can actually stack them, you know? So, there are, there are different systems that we can look at.
So, you can make the most of the space if you have to.
You can actually almost double the capacity if necessary.
Because of the opioid thing, I know it's calmed down right now a little bit, but the last couple of presentations I had, there's freezer boxes in different counties because they just don't have the space and...
So, it is something...
Are you taking that into account? And there, there are systems that you're looking at, that that number actually could be almost three to four times based on that space.
How many, how many storage facilities do you have now at our current space?
We really don't have any.
No.
Okay.
That's really the biggest crisis that we're in.
Okay.
And, and as I said in that article, we're prob, one problem away from having nothing. You know, we do have some space at Grace Steel, but that's very, very limited, and, and that's really not, you know, designed for what we need. And that's why this is imperative that we, we do this. I mean, we're, we're at a point where we really have limited space.
Yeah, I can't even believe that you can operate legally in that building.
Thank you.
Well, it, it, there's a lot involved that...
Yeah, you're jacking up the floor in the front of the building. I read that article, too, that's...
Just to address that, what, what, what happens is that, that section of the building is, there's a dirt floor, and as that, I guess, just began to settle even more, we had to jack it up so the floor was stable. So, there, there are some serious structural deficiencies in that building.
What's... Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Excuse me, Ms. Ferrara.
Now, I think you've answered my question, because I remember all these years you have been talking about not having places to store bodies, and it's always been a huge concern, but you've addressed it adequately, you feel, for, for the future.
Yes, so this was designed in such a fashion that I've taken some time, and, and really, when you look at, if you go back to the very first presentation that made some counsel, forgive me, I'm bad at time, I think it was about twenty years ago.
It was June of twenty thirteen.
But, before that.
Oh, no.
That was in ninety...
Ninety-three or four.
Yeah, ninety, somewhere between forty and ninety-six.
Yes, yes, it was when I was here, yes.
Yeah.
Living archive.
So, that drawing there, the, 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 the concept or, or what we drew, the workflow is very similar, but the size has certainly changed, and, and even from two thousand and thirteen to now, what I really did was, when, when Glenn and, and I sat and talked about this, we talked about the importance of building this into the future, you know, for the future, to, to address the needs of this county. And this design gives us the flexibility, I think, to, to carry this county, you know, into the future.
I have a question. I, I, because, so what's the length of time that you would actually keep a body? Or like, does it vary on the case and what you need to do with it, or is there a certain amount of time that you have to... Sorry, I'm, you know...
Yes, it varies very greatly, and there are issues that I would like to go into more detail, and this may or may not be the best time to do that, but there, there are reasons sometimes where we have to hold bodies longer or, or less, and I'd be more than happy, you know, to, to take some time, and I think it would take too long to really explain that answer.
But that's why you need, you feel like it would be adequate space, given that there would be different lengths of time that you would need to store?
Yes, ma'am.
And the carts, the parking in the back? So, you would have your own vehicles, or is that just...
Our office does utilize our own vehicles, and we do have a series, in, in Northampton County, we have four trailers that are used for different things. So, there's a smaller trailer that is an asset or a resource that we use when we have crime scenes that lasted for extended periods of time. For example, there may be excavation involved. It, it has certain equipment in that we would use for that type of scene. There are three other trailers. They're not property of the county. One is a task force trailer that's set up for mass fatality incidents. One is, two, I'm sorry, two other trailers are for mass fatality incidents, type issues also. There are four of each of those trailers stationed throughout the state in strategic locations. Northampton County happens to house two of them. I sat on the executive committee, so I, I saw that as a resource that I thought would be good to have in our area in the event we have some type of mass fatality incident because of International Airport and because of other airports that are in close proximity to Northampton County.
Ms. Zierinski.
How many people are, are currently employed at the, at the current place, and how many more can be employed, given how much more substantial this building's gonna be?
So, currently, Northampton County coroner's office has twelve part-time staff. We have four full-time staff. We had approval for three more additional full-time staff, which we're still in the process of hiring. We did have a little bit of turnover, and we have two secretarial positions, or an executive secretary and a, and a part-time secretarial position.
And because you're getting this new building, will you be able to employ more people, or will it expand?
Yes, so, the, the idea with this building here, it will also, with the digital forensic lab, there's going to be some more personnel. That may be not necessarily full-time personnel, and it would fluctuate. That would, you know, be kind of transitional people that would come in, do certain work, and leave.
Oh, like consultants, or somebody who has some specialized rotates?
No, they could be representatives of police departments who also have that training. Yes, and they could rotate through, and we would work in conjunction with law enforcement agencies. We want to have the equipment available to us to address the needs of law enforcement in this county as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Everything's been budgeted for. Your, your design work was budgeted, probably been budgeted. I'm just curious, on a monthly or yearly basis for cost of accounting to keep the building going, has that been discussed at all? Because I don't know what, were electric building or gas, sun power?
We're, we're looking at solar panels on the roof, as well as it would be propane or gas if available. Which is really the most energy efficient case. No, we have not. We, we were, we, we have not done that.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Lott?
I'd just like to compliment you. I see you, you, you put future expansion. I, I work, so often they don't do that. So, I hope, I hope you're gonna be serious about that and, you know, look at your mechanical when you're doing this and actually have the ability to add on, because in hopefully thirty years, when I need this place, I don't want to find out it's overcrowded and, you know, we couldn't build on to it. They're saying...
When, when, I worked with Glenn on this, that was one of the things that I thought that was very important. I'm sure I won't be here by that point. I'll probably be long gone, but this is designed in such a fashion where actually a lot of the utilities internally, in, in other words, the, the plumbing, the electrical, is, is designed in such a fashion for that potential for any future growth.
And also, we have the potential for, to add another autopsy table if necessary, too.
Thank you. It looks like you, I mean, looking at the plans, you, you seem to have planned in future, future expansion, all these things. It looks like a very intelligent design, if I may. I mean, and I know Zach has wanted something like this forever, and honestly, I mean, I hadn't been out to the barn for years, and I saw the pictures in the paper. I was, I was stunned. I, I think, I know you wanted it in the past, but knowing how cheap we can be, maybe it was a better situation for you to finally get it now because that probably would have been obsolete if we had built it in the nineties, and you know how budgeting was. So, I mean, no, but it, it's a, it, it's, it's needed. It's, we're in a new era, and the county is a different county than it was twenty, thirty years ago. Things change. I asked my banker about a thirty-year mortgage on a new home, and he just laughed at me. But, anyway, I have a couple of questions. Will you still be using the hospitals' refrigerators, coolers, once this is all finished?
No, this is...
We're done with them.
...in such a fashion that this would be utilized for our, our cases. I, I mean, the hospitals would still utilize their own...
Yeah, but I mean, we wouldn't need to, unless, unless there was a tragedy. I mean, I realize there's, you've planned the best you can. You don't foresee that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm, I'm so sorry.
No, the other thing was that, and you can give your answer and then loop this in, it may be a quick answer. Are we gonna be contracting out to any other counties, any of our space or facilities?
I, I can't commit any other county to that, but I certainly have, you know, talked with administration in the past about the potential, if, if other counties would, you know, choose to, to utilize that, there certainly would have to be some type of compensation, you know, for that, but I wouldn't...
You have nothing planned at the moment, a, a, a contractually with other counties?
I mean, there's interest, but there's no contract.
Oh, get it. Go ahead. I, I think you had wanted to say more, and I know we've been barbaraging you both with questions. Is there more you'd like to present to us without us nailing you with questions?
Just with reference to mass fatality incidents, we, this was designed, and, and we really spent, Glenn and I spent an awful lot of time on this, and I also spent a lot of time looking at this, and I've learned a lot since the nineteen nineties, you know, about what the needs of this county are, and I've been doing this for, I think, January will be twenty-seven years. I've been with the office for close to thirty or a little over. So, I've, I've learned a lot in that time, and, and I've tried to use, use that knowledge to, to help this county design a professional facility with the assistance of Glenn, and, and I think jointly, we, we put together a plan that, that I certainly hope that you support.
Well, thank you. I mean, this has been a long time, and I know there's, I'm, that's why you got peppered with so many questions. I think there's been a lot of questions brewing for years, and, but I did want not to get you guys off track if there was anything you wanted to add beyond what you said. I mean, there may be questions, I don't know when the bond comes up, but I don't think it'll involve you or the building per se. Is there anything else you'd like to add to your presentation?
I just wanted to thank each and every one of you.
But, thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. County Executive, do you have anything else?
Just very quickly, there was a leak from a valve in the new section of the courthouse, which flooded Judge McThattan's office. She had to flee, and that valve has been repaired, and her office is being cleaned, and we're doing some inspection to determine what in fact happened there, since it is the newest part of our physical plant here. That concludes my...
Just to follow up, is that covered under our insurance?
That's, that question was raised today, whether it might be covered under warranty. I think it clearly would be covered under our, our property casualty.
Okay. I think Ms. Zierinski had a question.
I, I just wanted to follow up on the mold situation in the one courtroom.
It has been abated.
Okay.
We are good. It's, the courtroom is back and functioning, and the ceiling is painted, and...
Okay.
The asbestos that was uncovered is sealed, and everybody is safe.
Okay.
And I don't, did we get the bill? We did not get the bill yet.
We didn't get the bill.
That'll, that'll be a future report.
Okay.
Any questions on what he said? Any other questions for the executive? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, now we're gonna go to old business, and first on old business is a, the public hearing on the ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the county, the council of the county of Northampton, Northampton County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the incurring of non-electoral debt by the issuance of general obligation bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed thirty-five million dollars, conveying to pay and pledging all available taxing power of the local government unit for the payment of the bonds, establishing a sinking fund, and appointing a sinking fund depository, fixing the form, maximum interest rates, maturity dates, and other provisions for a payment thereof, authorizing the acceptance of a proposal for the purchase of the bonds, authorizing a filling of required documents with the Department of Community and Economic Development, ratifying and directing certain actions of officers, and making certain other covenants and provisions in respect of the bond. I wanted to read that out because this is one of the big things that you as council members do, is issuing a bond. So, this, this ordinance was introduced by Ms. Hefner and Mr. McGee at the October eighteenth meeting, and the public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at this meeting. Now, does anyone from the public have any questions or comments on this specific issue? Seeing none, questions or comments from county council. Mr. Dietz.
All right, I, I have a, a few questions here. One, thank you, you know, I'd asked for some other interest rates and what they would be. Just a quick question here, so on the, the option two that we were given a couple of weeks ago, it had the cost with the twenty-six million dollar bond in it being a hundred and seventy-one million in some. Well, the, the new scenario two that you presented to me is now down to one hundred and seventy. Just curious, first of all, why that new one is down for the, the same situation?
So, let me just get my bearings. So, you're looking at the sheet here?
Correct, yeah.
And if any, does anyone need this? I have extra copies if anyone...
Excuse me, excuse me, when you come up, I know, but would you introduce yourself before you speak?
Scott Shear with PFM. Let me just grab a couple hard copies.
Please.
Thank you.
Is that the same as what we got last time?
This is the one that I think was emailed to you prior to the...
Correct.
It's just the one page.
Oh, okay. Do you have enough?
Yeah, I know, I realize that.
Okay, so, let's get ourselves reacclimated here. So, regarding this sheet here, you were, I'm sorry, you were looking at which...
Yeah, so scenario two compared to the scenario two that we got two weeks ago.
So, scenario two is the market rates plus, basically right on today's rates, plus a half, a half percent or fifty basis points. And then you're comparing that to the option that we looked at on the eighteenth, which was...
Correct. So, is that strictly just because the interest rates dropped between two weeks ago?
It, it was partially interest rates drop, but it's also partially kind of on the fly when I said how much conservative, conservatism I had in the rates. I said about fifty basis points. It was actually a little bit more, so I think when you factor in those. This is what we showed here as the, kind of the base case scenario one.
Yep.
I mean, that is literally right on, kind of as aggressive as, as you can get if we were selling bonds the day that we did this a couple, a couple days ago. So, there was just a little bit more conservativeness built into this one here than the fifty basis points that I had mentioned at the, at the public meeting.
Okay, all right, so that, that makes sense, and I appreciate it. So, again, you know, and my issue is, so, you know, on, on the new sheet here, scenario two, you know, it, it now costs us just roughly a hundred and seventy million. The difference between that and the current debt service we have is about thirty-three million minus the, the twenty-six million in projects that we have, which is the fifteen and eleven, leaves us, it's costing us now more, a little over seven million, which I'm comfortable with because in essence, we will get eight million back from the state, eight hundred thousand dollars a year for, for ten years. So, to me, that, that is a wash for it. Now, scenario two, or scenario three, rather, which is the market plus a hundred basis points, increase the cost to one seventy-one, thus our cost is eight million, three hundred eighty-one thousand, still costing us about three, almost four hundred thousand dollars for the county, which, again, personally, I'm okay with because we're getting all these projects done. Now, I, I do have an issue now when we come to scenario four. The, the cost of the project is now a hundred and seventy-three million, comes now thirty-six minus the twenty-six. We're now at ten point four million that we're, we're, we're paying for this, which minus the eight million, we're still paying two point four million now. First, my, my personal comfort is, then it no longer becomes worthwhile. So, I would like to, to put in, in the ordinance, if we can, that while you're shopping it, there, there's a cap of the, the current market plus the two hundred basis points or, 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 or less, so that we don't get to this number.
All right.
Because my fear is, so, you know, I, I realize that there's a lot of cushion built in here from the current market, but... from the current market, but you got the bond, and all of a sudden, you say that the current interest rate is, you know, 6% when we're doing this, and this project costs us, you know, millions over. It no longer makes sense because just personally, if we kept the status quo at 137 million, you know, in six years, our debt service drops $4 million a year, we could pay for the forensic building ourselves in cash, plus we had the cash on hand for it. So I think overall, it's a good plan. Now, I, two issues with this. One, I do applaud the administration, and I think that they play, they're working this with the, you know, how the state has laid it out for us. I do have issue with the state because the plans that they have, where they don't fund, you know, county-owned properties, so in order for us to get the $800,000 a year, we got to finance it. I think that unfortunately, so over 10 years, the state's given us $8 million. They're not really giving $8 million towards a project, they're actually giving $8 million. They are self-funding, you know, interest rates and banker fees. And if you do that across 67 counties, that's half a billion dollars that's being invested in, that they're paying in interest rates and bank fees, not really towards projects. Now, I realize that's out of control of the administration, and I think that they're doing what they can with the rules the state put in, but I think, you know, we're in the.
If I hear you correctly, before we, I get the sense you may be proposing, going to be proposing an amendment to the ordinance. Before we go down that road, I'd like to introduce, you know, if that's, I know, once you do it, you do it, but.
Yeah.
Ms. Zirinsky, you had a question?
Yeah, if you put a cap on the rate, couldn't that potentially kill the whole entire project if you don't get that rate?
That's exactly what I want, so.
Yeah, I totally don't want to do that.
So say that it goes at the market, and the interest rate is 7%, is what comes back. That's what the bond market wants, and it's now going to cost us another $8 million in interest. You're okay with that?
So these are the potential scenarios, right? What is the likelihood that we will get to scenario four as opposed to two or three?
I'd say the likelihood to get to scenario four is extremely slim. I'd say we're, just to kind of go back to the timeframe again, we'd like to, if this goes forward this evening, we will start preparing a lot of documentation with the administration, the preliminary offering statement, a lot of other bond documents, start the discussion with the rating agency, send an RFP out to the investment banking community probably in early December, and get those results back, say, early January, sometime around there. So we'd actually like to price the bonds. That's where we actually lock in the rates, sometime in mid-January. It's usually a good time to enter the market. And again, given the county's very good credit rating, which we expect to stay about the same.
Yeah, we've got that.
In that time of the year, I don't expect, now again, the markets are totally outside of our control, and who knows what's going to happen, but I honestly can't imagine it's going to go any higher than, say, the third scenario. And I don't even think that's likely. But again, you never know. I mean, the market could shut down.
Right.
And if it would, which it did a little bit when the market crashed in 2008, I think we would just delay the actual transaction. So we have that flexibility so that if we see the market get very sloppy for some reason, again, who knows what could happen, that that may happen, we just say, okay, let's hold off on sending out the RFP to the investment banking community, or maybe we got the RFP results back and we awarded it to the best bidder, but then we actually went to go out to do the deal a couple of days later, again, something happened to the market, we'd say, let's just put the deal on the shelf, and we'll come back to you and talk to you, and say, here's what's going on in the market. Things do not look like scenarios one, two, or three when I presented back on November 1st. Here's where the market is right now. Just to, I mean, we want to be transparent, we want to show you what's going on. I don't, I really don't think that's.
So a cap, is it necessary in order to make this go forward?
Well, we do legally have to have a cap in the ordinance. I believe that's 5.5% that we have in the ordinance. That's required for state purposes, that your bond counsel can speak a little bit more.
But not what he's indicating.
It's a little different, yeah.
Yeah, what he's indicating is a little bit different, and it could potentially kill the project. At this point in time, I think that this project's so significant that we need to take that risk or gamble. I mean, we've seen what the forensic center looks like, and we've gone through many of the numbers. I know that Steve Barron has gone through them with us individually, you know, so I think we understand what the risk is, and.
That's why I want to get some feedback before. I know Mr. McGee had signaled me, and then Ms. Hefner.
I understand Mr. Deets's concern about, you know, fiscally responsible, but also if you puts, if you propose something that may kill this, okay, all the time and energy that we put into this, okay, and if we have to start all over, and you count a couple of years down the road, and everything costs more, every, you know, you don't know where the interest rate's going to be in three or four more years. It's something the county needs. I just think it's going to tie the taxpayers' hands, and they're going to end up spending more money for something that they already need. I do appreciate the fiscal conservative, but I will not, I don't think I'm going, I'm not going to support that.
What we could do, if you'd like, just kind of throwing the option out there, is, you know, probably, we all follow the market to some degree, whether it's the stock market or maybe it is the bond market, the treasury market, you see a lot on TV and hear about on the radio, but maybe we don't all follow the municipal market as closely. So what I could do is maybe every two weeks, if you think it's worthwhile, to just send a chart of what's actually happening in the municipal market. Obviously, we see every deal that happens within Pennsylvania, we see what those rates look like, we can, you know, show you some kind of index every two weeks, and if there's some sort of anomaly going on, we'll let you know. So I'm happy to do that, if that provides some, maybe a little bit of extra comfort.
Well, except for, I mean, I do appreciate it, and I agree, the chances of getting the scenario four are slim, which is why I think the risk of putting that there, you know, doesn't scare away the deal, and if it does get to there, we should take a step back and look at the whole product, because that means something catastrophic in the market has happened.
Right.
The offer to share us the information in the future, while I think it's generous to do, it really doesn't matter, because now, once we vote on it tonight, it's really out of our control, it doesn't really matter what you show us.
It does, if we would exceed the cap that's actually in the ordinance that's built right now, that 5.5. So again, we have that.
So.
Excuse me, can I, I just wanted to ask if the bond counsel could come up, because I know there's going to be some questions. And would you introduce yourself? And I apologize for interrupting you, but I, this may, I think, because I know I'm going to have a question, it's going to be more legal. But go ahead, Mr. Deets, I'm sorry.
So scenario four, which is the current market plus 200 basis, what rate would that be?
That would be a 4.88 roughly.
And the cap built in is 5.5?
Correct.
So, I mean, so conceivably, you know, 4.8, we're at, it's going to cost us 2.5 million, it could easily be over 5 million it's going to cost us, where if we, again, I go back to, if we wait four years, we could pay for it out of our own cash that we have on hand.
Miss, are you finished? Ms. Hefner.
Did you want to respond to that, or?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I want to give.
Well, I think the question was more, he was, I think it was rhetorical for us. He's saying bond versus pay at cash on hand, and I, am I mistaken?
No, you're right, absolutely.
All right, so go ahead, Ms. Hefner.
So my question is at the very bottom, and it's a little tiny thing, number two, does not include any future refinancings the county may undertake? So given the scenario, and given the worst-case scenario, when would there, how would there be potential to refinance in our favor to correct this worst-case scenario?
Yes, so that's, we just always note that in these kind of summaries, whether it's, you remember, this ordinance that you're considering this evening actually does have a refunding component built into it on the 2009 month. Now, we can't actually do that transaction legally until next summer, and we may not even be able to do it period if we don't hit the savings threshold. If the market kind of stays about where it is, we're probably not going to be able to refinance that debt anyway. So this, that footnote on this table was merely just to say that you may entertain a refunding, whether it's the one that's built into this ordinance or some other one that might occur three, four, or five years from now, that would then obviously reduce the debt service, but we just kind of, we can't account for that in these scenarios right now. That's all.
Could you, the bond counsel, would you come up and give me your name, give your name for secretary, and I want to ask a question. I mean, both of you can still be here.
You're tired of Scott anyways. My name is Anthony Ditka. I'm in from the law firm of Dinsmore &amp; Schulte. It is my great pleasure to be here. I am your bond counsel. I'm sorry I missed your meeting on November 1st. That was, or to me, on October 15th.
Whenever that was, yeah. We got you.
But it was just not possible, so.
A question I have, if, we have an ordinance in front of us. It was introduced, and it's a public meeting we're having now, and potential vote. If we get a, an amendment to the ordinance, are we, we're, we are technically under legal terms, we're changing the ordinance. So are we mandated then to have another, a reintroduction and a public meeting?
If I may, I think you're touching a couple different areas of Pennsylvania law, so I won't tread into the county code, but I will say this, under the Local Government Unit Debt Act, which governs the issuance of debt in the Commonwealth, it contemplates the ability to make an amendment. If in fact there's an amendment to the ordinance before it is adopted, what I will do is I will note that in the enactment notice. The process by which any local government, county, school, district, municipality incurs debt involves a summary notice that appears in the paper to inform the public what you're doing, so they can come in and see this process. And then a follow-up notice after an adoption or an enactment that says, yes, we acted on what we described to you. You are permitted in that enactment notice to tell the public, we amended the ordinance as follows. Now, if it was a dramatic change, you overhauled everything, that would be different. The amendment that's being proposed certainly seems to me to fall within the parameters of the Local Government Unit Debt Act. Now, I can't speak to the county code to see if there's any nuance there, but it strikes me this is probably permissible.
Would you like to say anything, Mr. Spadone?
Bond counsel, I've given you his opinion. He is employed by the county for this purpose. We are relying on his advice as to all of the provisions of the ordinance, whether they be the sinking fund, the repayments. He is our advisor in that regard, well beyond my pay grade.
Well, and thank you. I brought this up, I mean, we've done bonds, it's been a while since I did one, but I want to be sure we're walking on firm ground, and that's why I ask. I mean, I realize there's some things that are more county-related than.
I'd let the solicitor please ask you a question. Recognizing statements that were made, I'm sorry. Recognizing statements were made, particularly by Mr. Deets. Are you in a position to say that, that two, I think he was at 100 basis points?
200.
That was the 4.88%?
Correct, yeah.
And you're now at 5.5? Does that have any effect other than changing if that was the amendment?
The 5.5 that's in there is not necessarily related to where we think the market may go. The 5.5 that's in there is, if you are going to issue bonds, or notes, or anything, the debt act requires that you have either the exact information, this is what our bond issue looks like, or parameters. So we build a box that your deal may fit into. If we didn't do it that, we'd be waiting until January to take this action, when we know what the bond issue looks like. So we build that box, and we intentionally build it large. We intentionally build it large because we want to make sure the deal fits inside it. Here's what I mean by that. If you see the schedules that are attached to the back of the ordinance, the ones that were provided by PFM, they describe the maximum rates and the maximum principal amounts.
Yeah.
Even though the ordinance says it is a maximum of $35 million and 5.5%, if any of the individual maturities, when the bonds are sold, you know, bonds are sold maturity by maturity as opposed to just one, if any of the maturities, we exceed the principal amount that's provided there, we have to start over. If any of the rates exceed the rate there, we have to start over. So we intentionally build that box large, so that we don't have to run into that problem. So the 5.5% that's there is really a construct of state law. As to whether or not it's likely to get to 5.5%, I'm not going to lie to you, I couldn't say. First of all, I'm just a lawyer, but second, predicting the markets is certainly a difficult thing, and if I could do it well, I wouldn't be here. I'd be on the beach in Pago Pago.
Yeah, I mean, it's about, I guess my perception is, I mean, I know there's the question of, do you want to borrow money, do you want to pay a cash on hand? Then the other thing is, and I see this on the retirement board, is the idea of chasing interest rates, and sometimes I think that can be futile. I mean, you're trying to get the best rate you can, but I guess at any given time, you know, I'm just saying, I think that could be an issue, but.
I just think the sooner they get this, the sooner they'll get a better rate, because, I mean, everybody watches TV, you know?
All right, well, unless there's any other questions, I'm going to ask Mr. Deets if he wants to. Oh, go ahead.
The only other additional one I was going to say to piggyback on Anthony's comment about the schedule, that max schedule, the 5.5% rate, I mean, I would be comfortable maybe moving that down to 5%.
I don't think we'd.
But the reason I would not want to go below 5% is from a, from the investment banker or the underwriter, from their marketing standpoint. So remember, we're going to bid this house, this is going to be a competitive sale, so we're going to make sure you get the best rate out there in the market. And this starts to get in the weeds a little bit more of the bond math, but depending on the market, some of the actual investors out there, they prefer premium bonds, over par bonds, over discount bonds, so there's different ways to actually market this, to ultimately get the county the best interest rate. The premium bond structure would actually have a 5% coupon, but the yield might actually only be, say, a 3%. And so that higher coupon results in actually additional premium proceeds that you're going to get, so you don't have to borrow as much. So I don't want to tie the hands of the investment bankers.
I would be comfortable at the 5.
I'd be comfortable moving it down to 5.
Okay.
Are you proposing an amendment?
I am.
Could you tell, are there any other questions before Mr. Deets proceeds? What's it proposing?
I'm, may I be recognized? I am not comfortable moving it to 5. I think that, you know, you have a schedule before you.
Well, if you do not have the schedule for page 35, it's blank.
Yeah, it's a blank sheet.
That was in the last.
That was in the last.
I have it in my bag.
Right, I mean, he did a sample. I mean, it's a sample, if you wanted to, you can get it.
Yeah. Yeah, ours is blank.
I think it was part of the first presentation.
I think everybody says blank, though.
It should be in your package, Matt.
All right, Mr. Deets, would you please tell the clerk what your proposed amendment is?
Yes, dropping it from the 5.5 to the 5% max interest rate.
All right, so your amendment is dropping the interest rate?
From 5.5 to 5.
From 5.5.
Max, yeah.
Max to 5 max. All right, is there a second for Mr. Deets's amendment to the ordinance?
I'll second for discussion, and I'll just add that if interest rates go up two basis points between now and next fall, I think we're all in a heap of trouble. So I don't actually, from everything I hear, is the Fed is looking at the most to do four 25 basis point increases. So the, what is it, scenario three, I mean, I think that that's likely, that we may be in that situation, but I think it's highly unlikely, given everything that I've seen on financial news, that we would get to the two basis point level. And if we do get to that level, there's a big problem with the economy and inflation, so I don't really think there's much of a difference, and if we get there, it's going to be curtains for a lot of our 403Bs as well, so.
Yes, go right ahead, please.
To that end, let me say this. First, we're talking about selling bonds in January, so you're talking about that kind of basis point movement over the next 75 days. Second, this is certainly the council's decision. If the motion and second is voted on and the change is to 5, just understand, we don't have the wherewithal to print that schedule for you this second. So what you are doing then is amending the ordinance to reflect the schedule that will be provided subsequently in your parameters. So what you would act on tonight, we don't have the wherewithal to give that schedule to you now. For that reason, it would be my preference you don't do it, but that is your decision.
Well, then, given what we've just heard from bond counsel, I would withdraw my second. I thought we were looking at later into next year.
I was actually going to ask him as a bond counsel.
Similar, but he answered a question I don't have to ask. Well, is there someone else who wants to second Mr. Deets's amendment? Seeing no one, it fails for a lack of second, so let's move on. Are there any other discussions, questions on the main ordinance at this point? I don't know if we'll have questions. Is there any more questions for these gentlemen?
Not a question from me.
I mean, you can sit down, I guess, at this point, unless somebody makes a liar out of me and you have to jump up again. So, go ahead, Mr. Dietz.
Just, Mr. Cusick.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cusick.
He's got more hair than I do.
You have a similar jawline.
I always find it ironic that Zack appears before us in and around Halloween, so... And for me, it's been since the budget hearing in 2006, when I remember Ann McHale bringing it up at that time. You know, I do have some concerns. You know, the wraparound structure would not be my A choice, but it's something that I, we have done before. It does kick the can down the road. But then ultimately, this is something that'll be for the county long into the future. As far as purchasing the Human Services Building, I initially thought we should do it with cash until it was pointed out that the state reimburses us in the fashion that they do, and it doesn't make any sense to give up $800,000 a year in state, you know, payments and reimbursements for human services. The refinancing that will take place later in the year, that's something that may or may not occur depending upon what the Fed does and where interest rates are. But it's something that hopefully we'll see something. But lastly, the Forensic Center, that is something that is a core function of county government. It gets to public safety. It gets to due process for criminal and civil procedure. It is something that we have lacked since I was first elected, and I think it is long past due. I'm willing to overlook some of these other concerns I have because I believe that having a state-of-the-art forensic center is absolutely critical for Northampton County to have for now and into the future. So, I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Are there any other discussion questions, Mr. McClure?
Mr. President, my apologies in advance. Maybe I didn't hear. Did we seek any potential comment from the public? Anybody in the public who's...
Yeah, we did, yes. Mr. Dietz?
I should say that I will be supporting it even though, I mean, I do think that putting a cap on and protecting the taxpayers on that, that they want to back out to us. I do think, just like Mr. Cusick, I think that the overall of it is good, and I think, you know, it works within how the state has laid out for us, which is somewhat unfortunate. But there is more good than, you know, in it, so...
Any other discussion? All right, we're going to move to the vote on the ordinance. Ms. Zembo?
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
And Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Lysik. Mr. Barron, I hope you don't...
Please, please don't leave.
Change this joyous occasion.
You have some stuff to sign before you leave.
Oh, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. You could read the whole thing if you wanted to, but not now. Okay, all right. So, having said that, let's move on. Second item on the agenda is a public hearing on the ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Removing Mr. Robert Scott as a Member of the Revenue Appeals Board. This was introduced by Mr. Cusick and myself at the October 18 meeting. And the public hearing debate and possible vote will be held at this meeting. Does anyone from the public have any questions or comments on this issue?
No.
I think that's the problem. He's not here. I think that's why we're having the vote. All right. We all, hey, we all like a good laugh, don't we?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If I could just note, the Revenue Appeals Board, due to recent legislation, there will be a training component required in the future for anyone who is appointed. So, I think that's something to keep in mind when we recruit to fill the vacancy. Thank you.
And I would, yes, and I would like to say too, I mean, I hate the idea, I sponsored this, of throwing anybody off. But I think, given what we were told and the situation, I think it leaves us with no choice. I mean, unfortunately.
Do we know why he's, has there been...
It's been brought up that numerous attempts have been made to contact him. And I asked the executive last time if we called the police. I don't think we have.
We can't find him, and I agree with Mr. Heckman.
What do you mean, you can't find him?
We can't find him. I suggested, I suggested this to counsel very reluctantly. I mean, it's hard enough for us to find folks to, you know, this important service. But we cannot be without a quorum for the appeals board.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or concerns, issues from counsel? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Zembo?
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro? Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Good. Is there any other old business to discuss? Seeing none, we're going to move on to new business. And we have the introduction of the 2018 Budget Amendment Ordinance. Do we have anyone who would like to sponsor this ordinance? Mr. Cusick, is there a second? Mr. McGee? This will be a public, I'm sorry, there'll be a public hearing, debate and possible vote on November 15 at our meeting. All right, next on the agenda is the introduction of an ordinance to terminate the Higher Education Authority. Is there someone who would like to sponsor this ordinance? Ms. Hefner, second?
I've been wanting to do this a long time.
Oh, yeah, on the bus.
I think you jumped Mr. Cusick's.
Sorry.
But you can trade him on the next one. Mr. Cusick seconds it. Now, I'm going to ask, but I know we got information that was sent to us by the solicitor regarding our, the charter and what we can do on this. So, if you had a chance to review that, you should have that information.
Can I just ask a question?
All right, sure.
No, I'm just...
No, it's being introduced, but go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just want to ask what the intention of the Higher Education Authority was and why it's not functioning.
Well, I can kind of answer that for you if you'd like. Most of the functions have already been taken over by the GPA. When the GPA was created, it assumes the function of issuing bonds for Lehigh, Lafayette, Marvian, and the community, and the hospital authority, same thing. Bonds used to be issued through that authority, but when the GPA was established, it took over that function as well.
Okay, so my second question is, are there people on these authorities that we're going to have to, no? So, there's...
They're overlapped with the GPA.
Yeah, it's been subsumed into the GPA function. But there was money left that was only in that, in those funds, and it wasn't being used.
So, does that money then go to the GPA?
That's what I would hope.
Okay, I just asked.
Yeah, and we can get closure on this at the meeting of November 15, when we have public discussion and a vote.
Okay.
All right, introduction of an ordinance to terminate the hospital authority. Do I have a sponsor?
I'll second it, how about that?
Mr. Cusick, Ms. Sarinski?
Sorry, John.
These authorities are taking a hit.
I know.
All right, same thing. Well, there'll be a public hearing, debate and possible vote, November 15 meeting. Now, we have an introduction of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the Northampton County Council Authorizing the County of Northampton, Eastern Pennsylvania to Enter Into a Communication Site Lease Agreement with the City of Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, referred to as Demised Premises. Do I have someone who will sponsor this ordinance? Seeing no one, I'll sponsor it. Is there a second?
So, Bill said he would second.
Oh, Billy, yeah, I see.
Traditionally, these are sponsored by the district representative, so Mr. Lot, I would just suggest.
No, it's from Bethlehem.
All right, well, all right, yeah. I'll talk to you about it then afterwards. But yeah, he'll be it, and then McGee's seconding it. Okay.
It's been a tradition.
Listen, you guys didn't do an orientation on these little rules, I got to tell you.
It's like baseball where there's unwritten rules.
I was going to say, this isn't in like a special book like the president gets from the previous president, the Book of Secrets. It's just how we do things. All right.
Should have had coffee, should have talked to us.
Anyway, okay, so... We have that. It'll be a public hearing, debate and possible vote will be held on November 15 meeting.
So, who is it? Kevin and who? Yourself or Kevin and Bill? Mr. McGee?
Mr. Lot? Mr. McGee? Number five, introduction of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the Northampton County Council Authorizing the County of Northampton, Eastern Pennsylvania to Enter Into an Agreement of Sale with the City of Bethlehem, Pennsylvania for the Purchase of a Motorola Astro 7.14-Trunk Radio System and Associated Items. Do I have a sponsor for this ordinance? Mr. Lot will sponsor this. Is there a second? Ms. Sarinski? I, sorry, Ms. Sarinski put her hand up. So, there will be a public hearing, possible vote will be held at the November 15 meeting. Now, we have an introduction of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the Northampton County Council Authorizing the County of Northampton, Eastern Pennsylvania to Enter Into a Termination of Lease and Services Agreement with St. Luke's Hospital of Greystyle Property, currently being used for medical helicopter services.
That would be Bob.
You may sponsor it if you wish. Do you want a second?
There you go.
We have Ms. Hefner and Ms. Ferraro. Okay, there will be, again, a public hearing, debate and possible vote at the November 15 meeting. Okay, number seven, consideration of a memorandum of un... Oh, I thought she had to say something. A consideration of a memorandum of understanding between Northampton County and the City of Bethlehem regarding transfer of ownership of a trunked radio network resolution. Mr. McGee, would you introduce the resolution, please?
Now, therefore...
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm on the right one because the double sides are really...
All right, I hear you.
I got it? Okay.
You're in it?
Now, therefore, the resolution, whereas October 25, 2018, County Council received the memorandum of understanding between Northampton County and the City of Bethlehem regarding a transfer of ownership of a trunked radio network pursuant to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that the memorandum of understanding shall be approved this first day of November 2018. So moved.
All right, are there any discussion questions regarding this resolution? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
All right. Consider, now we will go to number eight, consideration of the Intergovernmental Transfer Agreement Resolution. Ms. Hefner, would you introduce the resolution?
Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Northampton County Council hereby consents to participate in the Intergovernmental Transfer Agreement, consents to Northampton County funding the annual IGT transfer of $11,913,400.
Thank you.
Yes.
Are there any discussion questions?
Just a question for clarification. There's no date on here. This is for 2019, am I correct? Okay.
Twenty...
We got our money for 2019.
All right, yes, 2019.
There's no year on this as to where, when we would be participating. I, you know, I certainly intend to support it, but would have been nice if that would have been listed.
Okay, so this is for 2019, and the resolution is as read? Any other discussion?
Just that it's doing well. The IGTs are doing well. More counties are jumping in, and Greystyle has a budget number of 6 million right now, correct? 6.2. And it started with 2.7 million, I think, last year, so...
That's awesome.
All right, well, then, let's call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
And Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, number nine is consideration of the 2018 Community Investment Partnership Program Grants Resolution. Mr. McGee, would you introduce this, please?
Sure. This is the resolution approving the fiscal year 2018 Community Investment Partnership Program Grant Projects for Funding. Whereas, Northampton County Department of Economic Development solicited competitive applications for the 2018 Community Investment Partnership Program SIP grants. And whereas, the county convened a grant review committee comprised of county staff and two representatives from Northampton County Council to review and make funding recommendations. Whereas, the county has presented the grant review's committees' recommendations totaling $843,202 in grant funding for 38 projects to the Economic Development Subcommittee of Northampton County Council. And whereas, the SIP projects will be funded using Northampton County local shared table games reviews. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the county of, by the council of the County of Northampton that the attached fiscal year 2018 SIP grants project recommendations for funding is approved by the Northampton County Council. And two, that the county executive of the County of Northampton is authorized to execute grant agreements with the applications not to exceed the approved amount for each grant. So moved.
Thank you, thank you. Discussion, questions? Mr. Cusick?
Well, we had a significant discussion earlier this evening. But I think the simplest one that, and this is, I'd like to put this in the form of a motion for an amendment, and that's item 10 on the list for City of Bethlehem. I would like to strike Christmas and reword that to holiday. And I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Now, the only question then is if it was submitted, and that was brought up, if it was submitted on their paperwork as Christmas, does that any way, shape or form create a problem?
He said that that was fine before.
Oh, he said it was fine?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, great.
She just did.
She just did? That's great, all right.
I want to commend that group, if I may. They had a million and two that they were looking at with 38 grants, and they got it down to 849. And I got to tell you, it's not easy to do when you're trying to help everybody. So, I want to commend that group that worked that program, okay?
I think they did it. They worked very hard on it, I agree. All right, I need to call for a vote on his, Mr. Cusick's amendment.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot? Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
And Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, is there any other discussion or concerns or questions?
Another amendment to carve out to.
Yes.
Number 13.
Okay.
Is to carve it out of the, of this resolution until our solicitor can get us a legal answer.
I'll second that.
All right, well, I don't know, any discussion on this? If not, let's vote on this amendment to the resolution.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Cusick.
Yes.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Ms. Warner.
Yes.
Motion pass by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, concerns, any changes anyone wants to make before we go to the vote on what is minus number 10? Well, no, not minus number 10, I apologize, we just changed a word that's already done. Minus number 13 alone. Any other, anything else? All right, then let's call for the vote on the amended resolution.
So they changed the number.
Got to change the number, yeah.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Cusick.
Yes.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
And Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're going to talk about the number 10, Consideration of an Amendment to the Vision Technologies, Inc. Contract Resolution. That was brought to our attention. Does anyone want to speak to that? I mean, so I have to introduce it first. I'll introduce the resolution, go ahead. Do you want to say something?
No, you have to introduce it first.
I just did.
Well.
Oh, I'm sorry, you want me to read it?
Now therefore.
Now therefore, be it resolved.
Oh, gosh, okay. I wanted to take a knee, that's exactly right. Northampton County Administrative Code, Article 13, Procurement and Disposition of Council, County Property, Section 13.15, Contracts and Agreements, requires, one requires approval of County Council for any contract exceeding $100,000, which was awarded using the competitive negotiation, negotiation after competitive sealed bidding, and non-competitive negotiation source selection methods. For contracts with renewal clauses, the entire potential payout, if all renewal clauses are exercised under the terms of the contract, must be considered when determining if council approval is necessary, and, whereas on October 25, 2018, the Northampton County Council received a request from the county executive to adopt a resolution for an additional, two months, excuse me, a resolution approving a contract amendment of $367,000 with Vision Technologies, Inc. for an additional two months, I'm repeating myself, I apologize, for managed IT services beginning November 1, 2018. The new contract total for three years base term is $7,622,750.62, and if the two five-year renewals are exercised, it's $34,43,313.82. Now therefore, be it resolved that Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract amendment with Vision Technologies, Inc. for an additional two months of managed IT services. All right, since I already said I introduce it, I introduce it, so. Do we have any, would you like to say something, Mr. Barron?
Well, we would have preferred to wait for this to go through the finance committee like we do with the usual contracts.
Yeah.
The nature of the situation and being allowed to continue our IT services with the new vendor, simply to keep the staff from having a mass exodus and chaos there, the ability to keep our computers running, which of course, you know, medicine at Greystale, security at the jail and in this building, it was very, very important that we did this. Vision has taken over as of November 1. We have severed and ended our relationship with Conduit Now Avenue, depending on the day of the merger that they were going through at the time, so we are moving forward, and you will see in the budget amendment that we've made provisions to handle this. Actually, vision is $1,000 less per month than Conduit was with this contract extension for these two months.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Are there any questions, concerns, issues? Do you have something you want to say?
No, I think it's imperative we do it.
Yes, and I know the executive, having been a former member of council, understands that, that something has to come late because it has to, it just has to, so it was beyond anybody's control. All right, so, let's have the vote.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Cusick.
Yes.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
And Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Are there any other new, is there any other new business to discuss? Seeing none, council committee reports. Ms. Sarinski.
I went to the Pennsylvania Association of Conservation Districts today to their meeting, and there were two things that came up that were really important, the spotted lantern fly. Amy Corman gave an educational presentation a couple weeks ago, or I believe Bill was there. But there is another one on November 9 from 1 to 3 at NCC, and these cards have been produced, and the conservation districts is going to use a grant to help distribute them through the Northampton County, which is really important, these actually are not just informational, they're used to scrape the eggs off of trees, yeah, or wherever. But the other thing that's really important about lantern flies is that they're going into people's chimneys and flues and creating a problem because they're massing there, and then that could create a problem with potential fire damage, you know, like, things like that, so it's really important. Anyway, so also, the DEP is hosting a public meeting and hearing regarding the proposed Heat Recovery Center at Wingat Middle School on November 7 from 6 to 9:30 PM. I'm going to email this to Linda, and I'm hoping that you could put it on our website to post that as, for the entire county. And also, there was one more thing. I am now on the board of the, of the Wildlands Conservancy, and they are having their annual Green Gala on November, what is it, 16th, and apparently, that's something that helps as a fundraiser for them, so I hope that everybody can go, and maybe you'll put that on the website as well.
Thank you, that was very informative. Maybe we could come up with a way to use solar panels and the heat to go into chimneys and burn the lantern fly nests.
Are you totally?
No.
You could do that with a magnifying glass, you could do that when you were a kid, come on.
Okay, any other council committee reports?
Not committee, I have a lead.
No committee, we'll go to liaison reports.
I attended the jail advisory board, and I finally got to meet the dog, and I think